Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the July 7th Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that our council members are present. The meeting is also being broadcast tonight, not via Zoom but via Facebook and local TV channel. I do have one announcement tonight. Several weeks ago, we saw a glimpse of what this next generation will bring to our community. A Canute's and Chevrolet's car giveaway for high school seniors, no one won the car in a confusing first round. In the second round, excuse me, a second round, a 2020 Post Falls High graduate, Brian Hanson's key opened the car's door. Although Brian's key opened the door in round two, he realized that the girl next to him had the winning key in the first round. Brian handed the key to Amy Palmer, saying it was hers first and she had won. Brian's integrity and honesty shows all of us that this is a generation that we can be proud of. And I know there have been several articles in the paper about Brian and his actions. I think that, you know, it's very commendable and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him for his actions. I think they were, they were very much first class and I appreciate what he did. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? There are declarations of conflict, ex parte, contacts, or site visits. See none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Okay, so, action items. Minutes A, being changed on 20th November 2020. Item B is failed to be ninth since we have 29 plus 20. Item C is a conflict by actually the computers. Item D is master development agreement for the Green Meadows subdivision. Item E is Foxtail fifth addition subdivision construction improvement agreement. Item F is tranquil Meadows subdivision construction agreement. Item G is Northwood fourth addition subdivision plot application. And item H is Villa Point North construction improvement agreement.
Any questions on the consent calendar? See none, entertain a motion.
I'd move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, through the discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Orders.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next up on the agenda tonight is public hearings. We do have two public hearings. And if anyone wishes to testify, there is a form on the table. Please fill it out, submit it to our clerk, and we will listen. Also note that, shall we, will we have a timer up tonight?
Um, I normally am provided a timer, but.
Looks like one might be coming.
I think it's gonna come, yes.
So if anyone is wishing to testify, I would ask that you please keep your eye on the timer that is up here. As we get close to the end, if you, time runs out, I'll let you finish your statement, but then we will move on to the next, next person. So the first item up tonight is the Simon zone change. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Manley.
Right, it works. Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, members of the city council. John Manley, planning manager at the City Post Falls, presenting the staff report for the Simon zone change. The case file is RZNE 3, 2020. The applicant is Rand Wickman, representing the owners, Robert and Joy Simon. Rand is present this evening to present their application. So, request for this is to rezone approximately .3 acres, which is currently zoned, single-family residential, to the high-density multifamily R3 zoning district. The site is currently vacant and is undeveloped. On May 26th, this application was denied for the R3 at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission did acknowledge that potentially R2 as an alternative for them to come back as. Project location, as you see here, the northwest corner of Ninth and Brigger. This is just a block west of Idaho and Mullen. As stated, the current site is vacant, there's no topology or vegetation matters on the site. And the site is serviced by the City Post Falls for both water and sewer. What you see here is the zone change review criteria, there's six of them. So I'll go over the first three as they're thematically very similar. So you want to look at the future land use map, is it consistent with that? Look at the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, as well as, is the zone going to be compatible with street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, any geographic or natural features. So looking at this site, you see that there's Idaho and there's Mullen. You see R3, that's that purple, and then you see the yellow, which is the R1. So in your staff report, you see that there's some discussion of trying to get increased density near your higher classified roadways and your transitioning as you further away to the perimeter for single-family type uses. Here, you don't see a lot of transitioning going on, it just switches from R3 to R1 near some higher classified roadways of Idaho and Mullen without being adjacent. What does the R3 allow? I highlighted here, it's not super visible as I wanted you to be able to read the text, but here in the R3 for the single-family, it allows for that, it allows for duplex, it allows for other multifamily, and allows for townhomes. This is the land use table in Post Falls Municipal Code. You also look in the bulk and placement table. So, you look at here, the R2, those, the other zoning district, the big difference between them is the R3 allows for up to 45 feet height versus R2 caps at the 35 feet, which is similar to other single-family homes. Another difference between R2 and R3 is the density, there's a little bit less density allowed in the R2 versus the R3. I know we're talking about R3 as a proposal. I did though, as I'm presenting this, since it was brought up during the Planning and Zoning Commission, bring that up now at this time as well. Looking at some of the existing uses in the area, I wanted to highlight some where the, some duplexes and triplexes and some other higher fourplex and sixplex were. So here's the site you see in red, a box, just to the south, there's a duplex, adjacent and surrounding are other single-family homes. A little bit to the south, you have two triplex structures. On the south side of Mullen, you start getting a transition into more multifamily type uses, with the fourplex, the sixplex, and some, the duplex. Another thing noted in the staff report was the proximity of the bus stop to this area. This is in close proximity to a bus stop, so it does lend itself to convenience to additional housing near the bus stop, which would be consistent with some of the policies in the comprehensive plan. Here's the future land use, you see this all as residential. This is the current future land use map, it's going to be updated here very shortly. But, the time of application, this is what it would be going by. The future land use here, it's all residential. So this entertains the fact that whether you're an R1 or a multifamily project, it's all compatible with the future land use designation. Moving on to the other criteria, commercial high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. This dovetails into what I was saying earlier about some of the goals and policies thematically. This here isn't really, so they're asking for high density, so it isn't necessarily adjacent or along a road of higher road classification, it's a local residential, you've seen that in the staff report, but it is in close proximity. Taking into account the next criteria, which says neighborhood commercial or lower density is typically assigned a property as they proceed further away as high intense urban activity areas. Well, they were in that median transitional zone, where you are still pretty close to a high intense urban activity area, you're not necessarily far away either, so it's kind of in between both of those review criteria. The last criteria is industrial zoning, which wouldn't be applicable. Here's the agencies that were routed for this request. Didn't receive any comments. And going back to the zoning map, do you have any questions?
Any questions, John, at this point? Oh.
So I just want to be clear, John, like, all that in orange is already R3?
Correct.
Okay.
So even though there may be single-family homes now, someday, at some time, someone could apply and, and develop at a higher intense manner.
Okay. That it?
Is it for staff, yeah.
Okay. Applicant, name for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, one more question.
So John, with .3 acres, if it's changed to R3, what would be the maximum number of units? Even if they went up that 45 feet, I mean, would it be five, six?
The .3 times 18 for an apartment, so I believe that puts it at about four.
Okay.
You know, possibly five, but then, then you have a parking lot, you have swells, you have other site plan considerations that would play a role too. You got a street stormwater as well as parking.
So it'd be a push, but you could probably get five?
Probably could get five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good.
So John, is there any R2 around there then, or is it just R1 or R3?
There's no R2 in this vicinity. What you see in brown, that is a legacy zone, the RMHP Residential Mobile Home Park. At that location, you do have south of Mullen Avenue, you do see some commercial zones on the south side.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. Now, applicant, please.
I'm gonna help bring up his PowerPoint. John's seen me work a computer before, so. I'm just trying to let them see that I couldn't social distance from a tree very well. Is this it right here? Yes. Right, there you go. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council, Rand Wickman for the record. It's been a long time since I've done one of these in person, I hope I remember how. It's good to be back in person, doing these again. So, I'm pleased to be here representing Robert and Joy Simon on this zone change request. I think John covered most of the issues here, so I'll just touch base on a couple of things, try not to repeat. The property consists of two platted city lots, as you can see, it's lots 11 and 12. And it's 13,198 square feet. The zoning, as John discussed, is R1 currently. We have the R3 off of three corners of the same intersection. And then it is R1 to the north and west of the property. Our thinking on requesting R3 is, there's a, kind of a concept in zoning that similarly situated properties should be treated similarly. And we thought, you know, we got three other corners here that are all zoned R3, you know, what's different about this other corner that it should have the different zoning treatment? One of the things that the planning commission discussed was the proximity to, proximity to the higher classification streets. But, in actuality, the, if you look at, of course, it never works, oh, there we go. You look at this, this parcel here is zoned R3, and it's actually, from a road distance perspective, actually farther away from Idaho or Mullen than what our property is there. So, I think, you know, in that regard, it is certainly within, you know, within the reasonable proximity of those higher classification streets, given how you've assigned zoning elsewhere. We also looked at this issue of R2 zoning, and frankly, there isn't any R2 zoning in the neighborhood there. We thought R3 made the most sense so that it could be contiguous to existing R3 zoning. And so those are the considerations that went into our request for R3 zoning. You can see, here's a photo of the site. This is taken from Ninth, looking to the northeast there. It's flat, it's got a few trees, it's well-maintained, but really no obstacles to development on it. Basically, the property owners, right now, they could, they could do two single-family residences, one on each of those platted parcels. The zone change would allow them some greater flexibility. Their goal, their preference would be to build a fourplex on that parcel, a single fourplex. I have done the math, a fourplex, it works at least in theory on it. Once you take off setbacks and street improvements and those types of things, and figure your maximum lot coverage and all of that. I think fourplex is probably, is probably a little bit of a challenge, you might only get three out of it. But, a fourplex is their goal, and that would be what they would design for. Five units is, as one of the council members questioned, is theoretically possible here? We've got enough space under the allowable number of units to get to five. I just don't know that you can get there from a, as a practical matter. I don't think you can get there just because you've got street frontage on two sides and, you know, when you take out stormwater and parking and all those kinds of things. I don't know that you can get a, a fifth unit in there. It's not what my clients are wanting to do in any, in any regard. So, a fourplex would be the most intense development that they would propose there. This is the aerial, as John showed, he went over the other duplexes and multifamily units that are in the area there, so I won't, I won't go back over that. The planning commission did recommend denial, and frankly, that put us into a little bit of a head-scratching mode. We weren't really sure what to make of it, because they, they thought it would be too dense. But at the same time, the R2 zone allows a fourplex, the R3 zone allows a fourplex. You know, what you're going to get there under either zone is the same thing. You know, you would get a fourplex, perhaps only a threeplex if it's too tight. And so, you know, going to an R2 and starting the process over, you know, we, we didn't think that that made a lot of sense for us, because ultimately, it's this body that will make the decision as to whether, whether the zoning should be changed or not. And so, but they opened that door. Again, our concern was that there's no R2 in the area, it'd be an island of R2. And so, we thought, let's go to the city council, let's see what they think, and, and so here we are. And, as I said, this is, those were kind of our thoughts on that. And so it really comes down to, I added the same table that John did, I didn't know he was going to cover it, so there it is, it, you know, comes down to, it really is, there's the height difference, as he pointed out. You know, you've got the, the 45-foot height difference, 45 versus 35. And then you come over here and you've got 2,400 square feet per dwelling unit versus 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And like I say, that, that would get, give us one additional theoretical unit that we have no intention of, of using. And so, it really brings us back to, you know, as a, as a council, are you comfortable having a fourplex there? Or not? Or should the, should, you know, the Simons regroup, build a, build two homes on it and, and move forward? Or, you know, are you comfortable having a duplex there? Is that the right thing for the city? If you are, you know, if you think that makes sense, you've got a couple of options. One is to approve the R3 zoning as we requested. A second option would be to move forward with the R3 zoning, but you could, if you were a little uncomfortable about that fifth potential unit, you could limit the density to a, a single fourplex using a development agreement. That's not a device that this jurisdiction has used much, frankly, a development agreement in the context of zone changes, but it is available to you, it is an option. You could also send us back, if you thought R2, if you agreed with the planning commission, you think R2 is the zone that makes sense there, you can send us back, we'll start over, and we'll come forward with an R2 request. I would ask that you don't send us through that exercise if, if, if you don't think we have a good chance of getting out the end of it successfully. Or as I said, you could deny the request, and, and the Simons will get on with their life and, and move forward with the existing zoning that they have at the site. So, that's our, that's our request. We would appreciate some direction in this regard, ideally a favorable decision. I'll stand for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Mr. Wickman?
Mr. Rickman, I'm looking through some of the notes, I don't know that I have it here, but during the planning and zoning, did you say that you were okay with the R2?
Well, we're not opposed to the R2, you know, we, that would get us where we'd like to go. We just have to go back through the process in order to do it. I don't think you can, I won't speak for your legal counsel, but I don't think you could approve an R2 zone tonight. And so, we would just need some direction from you in that regard.
Mr. Wilson.
Make it so you can hear me a little bit, echoes in here. So, I actually disagree with that. We noticed this zone change is an R3 that includes everything that's allowed in the R2 zone at higher densities. It, the recommendation from the planning commission and this process is, we get a recommendation from the planning commission that says, what do you think the appropriate zone is? Here, they said, we don't think R3 is appropriate, R2 could be. I think based on your hearing tonight, if you determine that R2 is appropriate, you could make that determination tonight and move forward, assigning an R2 zone without sending it back through the hearing process all over again.
Yeah, we've actually done that before, going from.
Because, yeah, we've, we've already noticed it for everything that could have possibly been done here, so to the extent someone was going to object to an R3, they know they're unnoticed, they can come in and object to the R2. This is a less intense zone, we've advertised for the more intense usage.
Mayor and council, based on that, we, we would have no objection if that's a preferable action for you. We'd have no objection to going to R2.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
No, we don't.
Mr. Wilson, I have a question for you. We received some information prior, prior to the meeting started.
So my understanding was this was submitted by someone that was, I think, wanting to testify tonight, but didn't appear, so I would ask you to read this, this would be a part of our record, it was submitted. Hopefully you've had time, it's only, well, two pages, but fairly large type.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry, I did appear.
Oh, you did appear. Can we allow him to testify?
That's entirely up to your discretion.
Counsel.
We'd need to get him to sign up, but we can do that after the.
We'll let you testify, when you're done, would you get with our clerk and sign the appropriate forms? And if you will, we'll have you step over here and name for the record, and again, your timer is right down here on the front desk.
Okay. My name's Phil Mattson, and I understood that when I submitted this on June 29th, that that was all I needed, so I didn't fill out the form when I came in. So, this isn't going to be so much from the detail aspect, but from the neighborhood aspect. I purchased the property across the street of the, I don't have a map here, but, across, directly across the street. And when I did, I verified it was R1, so that, because it's a retirement home for me. And I have a small business in there. I have very low traffic, one to three customers a week, and it's a clock repair shop. So, I do that in my home, and what I was looking at, the discussion that was, that R3 was struck down and this would be a possibility for R2. And so I'm speaking more from the personal points, from all the, I had 18 neighbors, all property owners, sign a petition for the R3, all totally unequivocally against it. And I turned that in in the last meeting, I don't know if you have the copy or not.
We received it.
Okay. So, I agree the, the two homes would fit fine on that property. I live in one across the street in an almost duplicate situation, and houses fit just fine. And we're zoned R3, however, most, all the whole area that's orange in that picture is single-family dwellings, most. I'm kind of ad-libbing, I did sign, have the petition signed. R2 zoning will bring more cars. As you look at the two triplexes down in the corner of Mullen and Brigger, there's a lot more cars that come in, and a lot more activity. Right now, it's been very quiet, but over the last two years, there's been multiple police incidences. So I, I turned in a police incident report from before, and I believe there was five drug-related and half, and another half was personal issues and things. So, we're concerned about parking along the street, and the more dense housing like a five-plex would do that. I think a duplex or two homes would fit fine, and all the people that signed the petition wanted one home, so I'm kind of speaking up. I don't know if anybody else has showed tonight. And I'm just concerned about property value and peace of mind in long term. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
See none. Rebuttal? Do you care to rebut?
I don't think so.
Yep. Close the public hearing.
One thing that stands out to me is the, is the street classifications for high density. And the question by the applicant was, there are lots that are on the other blocks that don't necessarily abut Idaho or Mullen, but clearly the zoning has been done by block. And I think that's kind of important for people who live in a given block. There's a difference of having high density across the street than directly right next door on a property line. So if you look at it from block to block, that makes sense. Every one of the blocks that is R3 is either directly abutting Idaho or Mullen or both. And this particular parcel does not, nothing on that block does. So, I don't see anything wrong with that methodology, things change over time. Everybody knows that those blocks that are along those major streets could end up with apartments on them someday. The people more interior on the much smaller, narrower streets, there's less room to park on the street. Those that live on that block, reading the minutes from the P and Z meeting, unanimously against the higher density, and I, and I get it, being on that block. So, personally, I would be opposed to this zone change.
You talk about the streets, but you do realize that just to the south is all R3?
Yeah, but all those blocks to the south, all abut Mullen, so.
I'll speak up too. I'm, I'm, I would be against the R3, but primarily because of the height.
I'm, I would be against the R-three, but primarily because of the height. I know that what their intention is, was maybe not to go up high, but that, to me, is the deal breaker. It's, I could not, I would not want to say, see something tall on that corner, and by making it R-three, you open the door for that to happen. I agree with Councilman Malloy, the way that it's blocked out. We've satisfied the desire of the city to have a mix of properties. There is a mix of properties already there. I agree with Mr. Mattson. He did his research. He looked, he said, that's supposed to be R-one across the street from me. We asked citizens to do that, and then now it would almost be like we're saying, well, you did it, but we're going to change it anyway. I would not be in favor of R-three. I could lean toward the R-two.
Just in listening to, I am not in favor of the R-three either. We just heard earlier that there's a lack of lots for building single-family homes, and so then we see we have two lots here where you could build single-family homes on them, so I've, R-one, I could maybe lean to R-two, but I'm definitely against R-three.
Carrie?
I was just looking at Mr. Mattson's notes here that he set from his memo. He lives in one of two homes on a duplicate lot across the street, so in R-one, you could fit two homes, one on each of two lots. So if this stays zone, R-one, could the Simons build two homes there?
Yes.
And so they're wanting to build a fourplex?
Correct.
And it would need to be R-two in order to do that?
Probably have to be R-three to make it four. Probably could only get a triplex on there.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. You can get to a, to a fourplex with an R-two zoning.
But would it fit without going up?
That was my understanding from what I heard from the applicant.
And if it doesn't fit, they couldn't build it.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's a dilemma for me.
Lynn?
I'm opposed to the R-three, again, for the height requirements. I, forty-five feet in a residential area just doesn't work for me, no matter what, but I also have concern for the amount of parking that's been presented in this testimony and others from planning and zoning. And I see it in some of the other subdivisions that we have approved recently, is that parking is still a problem. And we're parking across the streets, we're parking down the streets, we're parking in areas that are not on the developed properties that the people live in, so I have a concern there. I could lean towards an R-two here, but nothing more.
Lynn?
I would agree with Lynn and Al, and I guess Joe and Carrie, that going that high around other homes in the area, it's too intrusive, so I would not, I would not be in favor of R-three either.
So is there a motion? I mean, we, not to lead on a motion, because it's not up to me, but you've got R-three, P&amp;Z recommended an R-two, and you can leave it R-one, so.
I would move to approve file number RZNE-0003-2020 with an R-two zoning designation.
I could second that.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
No.
Nay.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
So my count was four-two, is that correct?
Yes.
For an R-two zoning? Okay. Thank you very much.
Quick reminder from here, we will draft a reasoned decision based on your deliberation tonight and bring that back to you at a future meeting for approval.
Thank you. Next item tonight is resolution, let me get back up to the right one. Second item under public hearings is the Idaho Street Housekeeping Ordinance Text Amendment. With that, I will open the public hearing.
So yes, Title eighteen A text amendment, case file TA-1, two thousand and twenty. The applicant is the Planning Division, and what the Planning Division's seeking is to assure commercial uses or non-residential uses, I should say, be constructed along Idaho or Spokane Street. I don't know if you remember, not too long ago, we did this amendment to Spokane Street. This is more or less an addendum to a recent amendment, but specific to zones SC-five and SC-six of SmartCo, which is primarily just in the downtown area, is that the intent is that the ground floor of any structure constructed on a lot with frontage on Idaho or Spokane Street must be non-residential. So what you see there in underline is the added code. Everything else already exists in SmartCo. Where this affects is as you see here in these elliptical blue shapes, to the west or the left of the screen is where it currently would be applied. What's being proposed is on the right side of the screen. You've seen in the staff report that I did reach out to the interested parties of this that will be developing this area, they are not opposed to this proposed language for Idaho Street. Reason for this existence of this condition is part of the city center plan that came about in two thousand and two. What you see on the left side of the screen, this is taken from that city center plan, is your typical corridor, Euclidian-based site commercial, where you have your parking lot in front and the building in the back, and you don't need a lot of on-street parking versus on the right side, you have your buildings fronting the streets, some parking on the sides and the rear, which you rely somewhat on some on-street parking to facilitate non-residential services and at times residential. This is reinforced in the city center plan, as you see here, with different types of built forms that can occur in a downtown with non-residential uses on the main floor. It was routed to those agencies. I didn't receive any comments on this proposed text change. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Manley. Al?
John, when I read through this, I didn't see any limitations on north or south boundaries of this change to the text amendment. So it made me think that what it's saying is Idaho Street goes quite a ways further than the elliptical.
The limitation is it's only the SC-five and SC-six zones, so I'm glad you brought that up, so I can add some additional clarity. What you see in that dark purple is the SC-five, so you only could apply it from this point to that point, and then in, on fourth, you could only apply it from about the on-and-off ramp of Spokane Street down to first.
Okay.
So there's your limitation as to zoning, and we don't have an SC-six zoning district yet.
Well, that was my only concern, was that I didn't see where it limited. So if that's in there and I just missed it, or if you're going to put it in there, I'm okay with it.
Well, that section of Idaho doesn't even exist yet, so.
Well, that's right.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Any other questions, John? Thanks, John. Anyone wishing to testify?
Thank you.
We have none.
John, you want to? No, you don't. You're all about yourself.
I'm going to close.
Close the public hearing. Counsel?
I'd move to approve the file number TA-0001-2020.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item tonight is unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolutions. We have two items, State Highway forty-one Gravity Sewer Recommendations of Award.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, members of the council, Andrew Arbeany, utilities project manager. Appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation tonight in person. Excited to be here as well to present a path forward. This is a project that I have presented a couple of times on, and I've given a couple of updates throughout the last two years. So we're at a point where we're moving forward and making a recommendation to award the construction contract. I've included the bid results and a little bit of the project history and major milestones, and I'll walk through that briefly before we get to the bid results. Quick overview of this project, we'll construct a new gravity sewer line, twenty-one inch gravity sewer from Horse Haven Avenue south down to Twelfth Avenue, along the west side or east side of Highway forty-one. The main drivers of this project, it was identified in the two thousand and eighteen Northeast Quadrant Study, and it addresses the limiting capacity in the existing trunk line along Highway forty-one. So this accounts for future growth along Highway forty-one to the north as the city continues to expand. So a quick recap, in two thousand and eighteen, council approved the memo of understanding with Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency. At the same time, the city executed an engineering design contract for the design of the gravity sewer. Moving into two thousand and nineteen, the city and TO engineers worked with ITD on the coordination, coordination efforts for right-of-way that would allow the city to construct the new gravity sewer. So this right-of-way was needed for ITD's widening of Highway forty-one, and as a result, the city was able to construct the sewer line within that right-of-way. In fall of two thousand and nineteen, we received an update from ITD, and at that time, they were continuing with their project schedule, starting construction of the widening in spring, summer of this year of two thousand and twenty, and anticipated completion of right-of-way acquisition by the end of two thousand and nineteen. We went out for advertisement based on that and opened bids. Following that, we received an update and right-of-way acquisition slowed and received an updated timeline, which resulted in right-of-way acquisition estimated in spring, summer, and ultimately, construction of the widening project was pushed to next year of two thousand and twenty-one. It was at that time that we brought to council a recommendation to reject all the bids and rebid when we received right-of-way. So as a result, we're here tonight with that recommendation. So I'll jump into the bid results. In June, early June, we advertised for bid. June twenty-fourth, we opened up bids and received four submittals, or four bids from four different contractors. The engineer's estimate is for eight hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. The apparent low bid came from Raz Construction, Inc., in the amount of eight hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. TO engineers and city legal staff reviewed the bids, and in our bid documents, there was a note for listing the subcontractors and suppliers. In review of that, we noted that three of the contractors did not adequately list all of the suppliers and subcontractors. However, based on Idaho code, that's required when you have HVAC, plumbing, and electrical, that is a requirement to list those three. This project does not include any of those three special trades, and based on the contract language and the results through that review, it was determined that that was a bid in formality, and the recommendation is to move forward with the bid award to the low bid at Raz Construction, Inc. An additional note on the engineer's estimate, just to point out, it's eight hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. That's about a hundred and eighty thousand less than the previous estimate when we bid in fall of two thousand and nineteen. That, at that time, that included two work schedules. There was a Schedule A and a Schedule B for sewer installation. Schedule A, which is this project tonight, is construction of sewer from Horse Haven Avenue to Twelfth Avenue. Schedule B was construction in Twelfth Avenue from Highway forty-one to the new Twelfth Avenue lift station. Following the bid opening in two thousand and nineteen and the delays in the right-of-way acquisition, we were starting construction of the lift station on Twelfth Avenue and determined that it was best to include that Twelfth Avenue sewer work as part of that project. So that amount of work didn't just go away, it was actually moved to that project, as that seemed to be a better fit, reducing timing conflicts and a potential, and a conflict between two different contractors trying to work in that same area. So that's a result of that eight hundred and forty-four. That also would reflect any changes in market prices from two thousand and nineteen to current materials costs, fuel costs, et cetera. Summary of the contract award is the amount of eight hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. We are requesting a contingency of five, contingency of five percent in the amount of forty thousand, thirty-four dollars in the event of unforeseen conditions or any items that may benefit the collection system. The total requested amount this evening is for eight hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, and this amount is currently being funded through the collection system funds and reimbursed. All project costs are reimbursed by the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency through the agreement, through the MOU. Just one last slide here and a quick note on the timing. Anticipate, upon approval, council approval this evening and signing of the notice of award, that will kick off the contract documents, getting those signed. We anticipate construction starting relatively soon, likely the late summer, August timeframe. Estimate about sixty days of construction. The main goal here is completing before ITD starts the widening project next year for that portion of work between Prairie and Mullen when they widen, and that's slated for March of two thousand and twenty-one. In regards to the current events and COVID-nineteen, we have a couple of projects under construction, one water project and a collection project. We've continued to move forward. Initially, back in the spring, we saw some potential delays and were notified that there could be some supply, supplier delays. To this point, we have not seen a major impact, or really much of an impact to that degree. We continue to monitor that, and especially as we move forward with another project, we continue to do the same. And of course, staffing is always a concern as well. Construction job sites and contractors are handling that in different ways and monitoring their crews. So that's, that's something that is an added component, but it's something that we continue to monitor as we move forward on all of our projects. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions.
Andrew, it's obviously a lot of money, but it's unusual for us, I believe, to see a bid that actually comes in under engineer's estimate. And I know you brought it back and asked us to reject bids before, so this one seemed to have worked, so I appreciate your diligence in that. Any other questions, Congressman?
It's maybe a dumb question, but so Idaho code requires a list of subs and suppliers if it involves HVAC, electrical, or plumbing, right? Isn't this a massive plumbing project?
No.
No?
It's bigger than that.
Pipe size.
Does it have to be the pipe size?
Partly.
Interesting. Okay, as long as we're all clear, then I just don't want to, I don't want to get bit later if.
Right. Specialty trades, so they view electrical, HVAC, HVAC and plumbing, and that also requires a particular license, a public works license, and that's that specific requirement. So on other projects involving a, for instance, a building and a floor drain, that would require a plumbing contractor, so there's where that line is drawn.
Good. Steve?
Just a quick question. So by us having that project done before they start the Highway forty-one widening, does that speed up their project then?
Highway forty-one?
Yeah, so, because the state's going to be widening it, right? We'll have all of our work done by the time they start the process then.
I don't believe our project has any impact.
One way or the other?
Well, doesn't speed up their work by having that completed. They've been anticipating, this next year, they'll be focusing mainly on utility relocation, so a lot of this has been known. We've started working with ITD in early two thousand and eighteen along with, for instance, Cooney Electric, some of the other utility providers. So putting in new, putting in new utilities and relocating utilities is something that ITD has been incorporating into their project schedule as they've been finishing up the design the last couple of years. So it's, I guess to summarize that, they already anticipate us doing this work and it would be built. it would be built into their project schedule, which they'd be putting out to bid here in fall. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So we will need a motion, correct?
Yeah, I'd move to approve the acceptance of the bid from Raz Construction for the SH41 gravity sewer upsize.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. We do have one resolution on the 2020 Post Falls Comprehensive Plan.
Move to approve the Resolution 2020 Post Falls Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is new business. We have three items tonight. The first is the fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Jason.
Chrome in the middle?
Yeah, right there.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This year was definitely a challenge when we had to complete the audit. We had the COVID event happen, and Anderson Brothers stopped, and then we had to resume. So in order to complete the audit, financial statements, I needed to make sure the audit was done. There was no adjustments to the CAFER, and then, once the CAFER was completed, they needed to review it, and I needed their audit letters to submit to GFOA in order to get the award. So it took some time, but we made it. So the good news was, there was no adjustments to the financial statements, there was no management letters, and there was no findings when they reviewed it, and they also found that we also follow our policies, that when they go through the financial statements, they make sure that we follow our purchasing policies, and they also did some interviews with staff to try to detect fraud, and there was none. So that was the good news. So the bad news is, it's the third, it's the beginning of the fourth quarter of 2020, and so I could start the CAFER all over again at the end of September, but we're just going to highlight the good part of this.
Jason, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Maybe it's a silly question, but we're talking about the CAFER.
Yes.
But we're showing the PAFER.
Yes, it's two different documents. The CAFER is 178 pages.
I like this one.
The PAFER is a little more, it's more user-friendly, so I thought I'd go over the PAFER instead of...
Yeah, I like that one, thank you.
But we could go over the CAFER, I could bring it back another time. Okay, that's what I kind of thought. I have to say, I submit the, I fill out all these really nice financial statements, and I give it to Kit, and she makes it pretty. So our auditors at one point in time had put another plain CAFER in the City of Post Falls CAFER together on their audit, on the table, and everybody gravitated to the one of Post Falls because it was pretty, so Kit made it pretty. So this year, she outdid herself with making it pretty as well. The PAFER is just a condensed version of the Corporate Combined Annual Financial Report. It hits the highlights.
I don't know if that's a highlight.
That's not a highlight.
Or that.
Thought you made it pretty, huh?
That was a bad day. But this just goes into, talks about what the city does. Here's, talks about the parks, puts some narrative to the numbers, which is a little more appealing, that's just going through the statement of net position, the income statement. What I wanted to go over was, at the very back of the CAFER, where there's the, the part of it that is also graded is some statistics tables. And so instead of going through the tables, Kit put some pictures to it to talk about the road miles, how many police calls, how many utility customers we have. So it make, the PAFER is a little more easier to digest when somebody wants to review it. What I wanted to go over was, there was one portion of the financial statement, which is the city's statement of net position, and the columns are governmental accounts, it's very hard to see, and then business type, which is the utilities, and it does a side-by-side comparison, last year, 2018 to 2019. And you can usually tell, one thing in the government accounting is, you can tell the, how well the city is doing by their net position, and our net position has grown from last year to this year. This one's really hard to read, but it is on the city's website, both CAFER and PAFER. And also, there's some great files in here as well. Capital assets, what do we spend our money on? 27%. Let's blow this up a little bit, my vision's not that great. You're not that good. Anyway, can't... Talks about what, out of 15 million, $15.6 million, what do we spend it on? Also, you have a breakdown of your dollar bill, of your tax dollars. There's a portion, let's move this up a little bit. When we talk about where do your taxes go, this piece is really hard, difficult to see, but out of the breakdown of all of Cooney Fire, the Cooney County, the NIC, this little portion right here, I believe it is 34%. 34% of the City of Post Falls taxes is actually received by the city. The rest goes to other entities, and so we always hear in my office a lot, my property taxes won't have, well, that's the overall whole, overarching. The city's portion, we only get 34% of the total of a resident that pays it to the county. So again, she made it look, she took my stats tables and made them look pretty. And then we talk about what expenses and the revenues, when you do a side-by-side comparison, the revenue sources and government activities, which is property tax, liquor tax, state shared sales tax, and also revenues by business activities. So we have those charts and graphs in here as well. And I just need to have council approve acceptance of the CAFER for 2019.
Any questions? Jason, on this?
In the council packet, I also included the audit letters, which is also included in the financial statements.
Always nice to get a clean audit letter.
Hey, it was a good time, yeah.
I would move to approve fiscal year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Physical Report.
Second.
Or Financial Report, excuse me.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Yes, go ahead.
Jason and Kit, in particular, the PAFER came in really handy, because I've got, been asked by a few people in light of recent events, the proportion of the city taxes that go to the police force, et cetera, and I just went straight to the PAFER, cut, paste, boom.
Oh, good.
And it was so, it was really useful. Thank you.
Good, glad to hear it.
Thank you. Next item up, Facilities Needs Assessment. John.
Here before you to get some input and feedback on a potential project we'd be working on over the coming year. We've called it a Facilities Needs Assessment. You could call this a master plan or a variety of different things. What we are looking at is something to basically look at all the city facilities that aren't in master plans and see where we are with the state of things. So I'll talk a little bit about the drivers behind that, what the scope might look like, how the process would work, but really, I'm here for, to get your feedback and input on this project going forward. As I mentioned, this would be a master plan for facilities. What do we mean by facilities? This is the streets office, city hall itself, the Parks Division office, which is the lower-left picture there, if you haven't been there, as well as the admin and support facilities for water and wastewater. So we have our water master plan that tells us how many standpipes, pipes, wells, and things like that we need. It doesn't really go into office space. Same thing with parks, they have a master plan that tells them what to build for parks, but it doesn't say where to park the vehicles at the end of the day. So that's really what this facility needs assessment would be looking at, is sort of everything else outside of these operations-driven master plans. And I just highlighted what I have on the slides, I'll move along. The scope of work, and this was in your council packet, we can also talk through details, is basically the same as any master plan. We want to look at deficiencies, look at projections for what will be needed in the future, take all of that into account and develop some alternatives, and then document the recommendations moving forward. And really, what kickstarted this conversation is talking about needing space for various things, and Jason said, well, that's all great, but where's your financial plan to buy any of this stuff? I said, well, okay, that's a good point, we should probably make one of those. So here we are, talking about moving that forward. What this would look like, though, is we'd have recommendations that say sometime in the next 15 years, the city needs to buy a five-acre parcel and plunk something on it. So then, when a five-acre parcel comes available, that's a good deal and a good location for us, we have a financial plan in place to be able to afford that, and we also have it documented that that's a need. So we're not coming before you with this brand-new crazy idea we had to buy five acres. The process for this, it's a little bit further in advance for what you would normally hear. We'd usually go out for an RFP on a project that you've probably known about in a master plan, and then bring you that project with a recommended contract award. In this case, we want to get the scope right before we go out and seek consultants, make sure we're asking the right questions. So like it says, we are here at the refined scope stage. From there, we'd go out and get probably an architectural firm with a financial subconsultant to help them look at the numbers of things, to analyze our spaces, our buildings, and what we might need in the future. We need to go through a request for qualifications to do that by Idaho code, so we get the most qualified firm based on our project. We would then negotiate a contract with them, bring it back to you guys for approval. If we move forward, we'd do the study. I'd put in the draft scope, there'd be several opportunities for city council to weigh in, basically looking at what was found for needs, we'd bring those to you, make sure you agree with those needs, look at the alternatives, get your feedback on which alternatives are preferred, and then a final adoption of the plan once it was completely wrapped up. Tentative schedule for that would be about this time next year, by the time you do all the check-in steps on that. Takes about a year. With that, I can pull up the scope if it's helpful to see it, but really, I just wanted to get your thoughts on it and see if we're headed the right direction.
That's for Joe.
Like it's smart.
I think it's a great idea, John. I'm just concerned about the cost. What do you, you got any idea what this is going to cost us?
That's kind of a hard question, and it depends a little bit on scope, and it depends on which firm ends up being selected. So we've seen other plans, we looked at a few examples of these, somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, which sounds like a pretty significant amount. That's about what our master plans are running for our operation side of things, so for comparison, but we're also looking at comparing this citywide, so it's over really parks, police, admin here, city hall, water, wastewater, and we would look at splitting those costs out based on the, so the utilities funds would pay their fair share of that as well. So that's a ballpark number for you, but I don't necessarily know if that's the right number to go off of. I will say, if we bring you a contract and the price is too high, we can always renegotiate a scope with that preferred vendor at that point.
Do we have anybody on staff that could do this?
I don't think so. I don't think we have any, I know we don't have any architects on staff. We could, I think the best answer is we can make guesses at it, but we're not architects, we're not in the business of planning out buildings, and that's really what this is focused on.
Okay. Thanks.
Comments or direction? So we need a motion to direct staff to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next item up is the proposed state grants of federal CARES funds for property tax relief. Mr. Cafferty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you in person again. So before you, we have a request for authorization to seek more information, I guess is the best way to put it. We've prepared a memo for you, if you have any questions on that. But as a general overview, as you're all well aware, and the reason we haven't been here for a few months is because of the coronavirus, the federal government has provided certain funds to deal with that through the state, which the state has proposed a plan to offset some of the city's property taxes using those federal funds. The question that staff and other attorneys in other cities and counties around the state are struggling with, and as recently as, I would say about, what was it, hour and a half ago, two hours ago, the Attorney General's Office issued some assistance but not real guidance on, and I mean that literally, when we were at the earlier meeting at 5:00, we got an email from the Attorney General's Office that they had been working on this while we were in this meeting. So the question is, can the funds that the state is suggesting be used for property tax relief, be used for property tax relief without violating the federal law? And the short answer is, I'll quote Mr. Brian Kane from the Attorney General's Office, because I think he says it about as well as it can be said. This office cannot offer a definitive legal conclusion. They don't know. So what we would like from you at this time is the opportunity to explore this matter further, and if the facts support it, we would put in a letter of interest, basically is what it is. And the reason it's up here today before you, when we don't have the answers to those questions, and we can't really give you a request to go left or right, is because the deadline at the moment for submitting the letter of interest or letter of intent is the 17th of July, which will be prior to your next council meeting. There is a request from the city, no, excuse me, the Leighton County Prosecutor's Office, which 24 other county prosecutors joined in with, requesting clarification on some of these issues, and a request that the deadline be extended from the 17th to the 24th. That may or may not happen, and again, this is all very fluid. As you all know, anything dealing with this epidemic, it ebbs and flows, it's one way and then it's the other, and so we're still wrestling with it. We just became aware of this fairly recently, and we've been trying to work through some of these issues. There are differences of opinions on what the rules mean and what they don't. Interestingly enough, some of the issues that I've mentioned in my memo were addressed by the Attorney General's Office, Mr. Kane, today, but also, he raised other issues that I hadn't really looked at in the same light, that call other things into question, but clarify some of the questions I had. So we're still working through it, but what we would like is the opportunity to, if we can find a clear path forward, to move it forward. If not, we won't be moving it forward, but at the end of the day, there will be another time to check in before we are actually binding the city to any of these guarantees or promises or statements that this is how we're going to use it, and it's, we're on the hook for it. Because the biggest thing that we as staff look to is, we want to do what's best for the city. Making a bad choice and getting into a debt to the federal government is not in the city's best interest. Likewise, foregoing legitimate tax breaks for the citizens is not a good thing to do either, and so there's a certain amount of risk, and we're trying to figure out what's in the best interest, because we want to do the right thing, but at this point, we just want permission to be able to move forward and keep looking into this.
Lynn, did you have a comment?
I do have a comment. Been talking about this with several people, and the program looks, the tax relief looks good on the surface. I'm concerned about the legal challenges. I'm concerned that if it doesn't adhere to the CARES Act, that Post Falls could be liable for somewhere around over $2 million back to the federal government. So I know that staff has concerns about this, I know I do, I know, I think a few of you do, and I would support moving forward to obtain more information, but based on the 25 county prosecutor's offices that think it's not legal, I would just, I guess, say maybe seek more information. the twenty-five county prosecutor's offices that think it's not legal, I, I would just, I guess, say maybe seek more information, that's my.
Yeah, I would add on to that. I've got concerns as well, in my real job, I deal with this, and I have seen, I think the last I saw in the Paycheck Protection Program was the thirteenth interim final ruling, which means they've changed it twelve times. And I think it continues to change, and the information presented in the letter from the Leighton County Prosecutor, I thought really highlighted some of the potential pitfalls we may face, and as Linda says, it's, you know, I don't want to do something that we would find ourselves indebted to the federal government at a later date. Again, property tax relief sounds great, and I'm all for it, if we can do it legally, without jeopardizing our taxpayers. So, I would agree, I think more information is good. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, John, I just got a question, I was reading that same letter, too. Is this more of an Idaho issue, the way it was written, or we're interpreting it, or is this a issue in all fifty states that are going to apply for these funds?
It's very much an Idaho thing. The governor on the twelfth of June issued a recommendation that one hundred eighty-eight million should be added to the local government allocation to cover the public health and public safety payroll costs as described in Exhibit B, or Appendix B, which is, I don't know if I included that with the packet to you, but it's called the leveraging the CRF, Corona Virus Relief Fund, to cover qualified payroll costs if local governments pass savings on in form of property tax relief. So that's specific to Idaho. Now, the CARES Act applies to all the states, and the CARES Act says you can't use these funds to replace your other revenues, specifically, the portion that I'm kind of hung up with says you can't use it to pay property taxes, which kind of sounds like what this is when it's called property tax relief. But, different people could interpret that differently, I suppose, and that's what we're looking into. What the Attorney General's Office this evening was hung up on is, there, they were asked a question by, what was that?
Representative Sally Toon.
Sally Toon.
Gooding.
And, the issue that the Attorney General's Office was hung up on is, it has to be a substantially different use, so how did they, so, the cost of personnel and services that were budgeted for in the most recent budget, but which due entirely to COVID-19 public health emergency, have been diverted to substantially different functions. So the AG's office says, "You can use law enforcement in our case, but only if you're using them for substantially different purposes than what you had allocated funds for them for before." And the Attorney General's Office says, "That's too factually specific, we don't know, you're going to have to figure that out on your own, at least today." And perhaps, we can help distill down a question with facts to get them to a more definitive answer on that, and that would be ideal. But again, the hope is that you'll allow us to explore this further, but we don't want to go down the road that causes further liability for the city, and not only doesn't give property tax relief, but puts the city and the taxpayers in a worse position by seeking funds that we're not entitled to, to be used for the wrong purpose.
So, do we need a motion to?
So, let me jump in a little bit. So, the deadline for the seventeenth that's coming up, that's the deadline that we have to submit a letter of interest by. That letter's non-binding, it essentially says we're interested in this program. I think our intent is that we would submit that letter of interest, say we're interested, provided we can get answers to these questions. We will have probably, it's in August sometime, I remember the date off the top of my head, when we have to submit a final request, and essentially certify that we're in conformance with the requirements. So, that comes at a later date, this will, so at this point, the motion would be to direct staff to submit that letter of interest, and to continue looking into this, and we can report back to you when we get more specifics from the governor's office, from the AG's office. I also believe that I have heard that the governor's office is seeking guidance from the Department of Treasury as well, on whether or not this program will work or not, so, it's kind of a stay tuned moment.
So moved.
We have, did we have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John Warren, that's, I know Shelley's looked at this as well, and it's going to be a very sticky subject, so I think we need to proceed cautiously. Administrative staff reports, we have traffic complaint on Poline, chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police, and it's nice not to have to unmute myself to talk this evening, so. Just real briefly, if you remember back in September of 2019, we had an individual come in and talk about three issues up on Seringah and Poline area. One was the roundabout, we had a crosswalk violation, they were worried about citizens maybe being struck in that crosswalk. The other was some loud exhaust issues, there are some cars in town that have some loud exhausts, I'm sure we're all aware of, and the other was some speeding concerns. So we set our jammer deployment up there, which is our box accounts, everything for us, set it up there for a week, and as you remember, we came back, and we also sent some traffic units up there, but it had a 1.6% of the vehicles in that area during that week-long period, were over forty miles per hour. So, we sent some cars up there, traffic units up there, for both speed modifications and exhaust modification issues. Fast forward nine months, and now we're in the summer months, it was June, we received another complaint of potential speeders in that area. We redeployed the jammer to see what the numbers were reading at this time, and in that one week period, it's 8.4% of those cars are now over forty miles per hour. So, and those peak times are between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, according to the data research. So we have assigned supervisors to assign a car to that area every day during those peak times, but I don't think that's enough, we don't think that's enough. We're going to offer up some overtime shifts for four-hour blocks to come in and try and control some of the traffic, get those numbers back down to what we want to see. I think between that, we've got another area in town we really want to see focused on, where and try and drive those numbers down a little bit. In thirty days, we'll send the jammer back up there and see what those read again, but that's our plan of action, at least from the police department side. Any questions?
Thank you, chief, appreciate you taking the time to look into it, and the resolution, efforts you made, and hopefully, resolutions you bring back.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that is, that are not on the agenda. Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm glad to see you all alive and well. It's been quite a while. One of the issues I'd like to bring up tonight is a city project that got started better than a month ago, that has caused nothing but headaches and possible damage to people's vehicles. It runs from Third Street to all the way down Ridgewood. And, the city came in there and scarified both sides of Third Street, there by Capones and all the way down, and then up Ridgewood, and scarified completely across the intersections, good two inches, in fact, some of it's all the way through the pavement and to dirt. This has been, this was done a month ago. There ain't been no repaving, there hasn't been, there's one sign warning folks that there's a bump. It's on Third Street and, oh.
Herborn.
Herborn?
I think it's Third and Herborn, isn't it?
No, it's not, it's actually.
Spencer.
It's between Herborn and Spencer.
Okay, well, anyway, there's only one sign.
Anyway, there's only one sign out there on the main road at Third and, I can't even think of it right now, anyway. But all the way down Ridgewood, from Third to First, it's cut completely across, and I mean, it's, it's that deep. And, no signage, no nothing, and no repaving. I don't have any idea even what they're doing, I've never seen this process before, scarifying just down the, basically, the parking lanes of a street. Because they didn't scarify the whole street, they just went down the parking lanes on both sides, and then right across the intersections. And it's an absolute mess down there, and there is no signage, and there's nothing being done. I would seriously like to know what's going on over there. I mean, it's been a couple weeks, I saw some folks putting in some handicap corners down there, oh, let's see, three weeks ago? That's the last time I've seen anybody working on anything. And I believe they were actually subbed, I don't think it was the city's employees doing that, but it was city trucks out there supervising this project. That's all I have.
Can we get an answer on that?
Yeah, our Public Works Director will get in contact with Mr. Flowers.
Bob, did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
Public Works Director, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Sorry, Shelley, he's masked, I can't hear anything anyway.
Seeing no one else? Then the mayor and council comments. I'm going to echo Mr. Flowers' comments, it's nice to be back in person. I want to thank Stephanie and Kit, and everyone else, Shannon, Rhiannon, Shelley, for all your efforts in the new venture called Zoom Meetings. We did all right, but it's still not nearly as functional as being here in person. We continue to take steps to protect. I've been getting, it's interesting, I've been getting calls, emails, asking me to mandate masks, and threatening me if I do. And it's, I've said it before, but it's truly about a fifty-fifty split in how people think. So, you know, my goal is to strongly encourage people to wear masks when in public, to continue to follow proper social distancing is the term, continuing with the hand sanitation, et cetera. And, even if you don't feel that the COVID virus is a huge issue, other people do, and respect that feeling, and I would just say, continue to do what we've been doing, our cases are going up, part of that is because the number of tests are going up. And we have, I've worked and made a few phone calls trying to see about getting another testing site available in Cootney County, and that is being worked on. But we're not at the end of this, I don't even know for how far through it we are, so, I would encourage everybody to use common sense, watch out for each other, and help protect each other, and hopefully, we'll get through this, and it will be a distant memory, but for the time being, it's, it's still a challenge, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we move through it. Steve?
Yeah, and actually, Bob brought it up tonight, but I have been asked quite a bit by my neighborhood, because I live off Maplewood, so people go Maplewood, and then they go to Ross Point, and go down Third Street, and so they can skip Selties. And so that has been torn up for about six weeks, from Ross Point Road to Spencer, and there are two crosscuts that have sink about, probably two feet, since they originally did the work, and then both sides have the crisscross, which is dangerous if you're a bicyclist, there's no place to ride on either side of the road now, from Ross Point to Spencer. So if we could, it has been five to six weeks since the project was started, so if we could look into that, and I've got a neighborhood meeting tomorrow night, and I told them I'd report back to them, so.
Tell them that we'll get them an answer.
I will, so, appreciate it, so.
We do not, need an executive session tonight?
We do not, but we will email out to council the response on this, so everybody has it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Next motion is?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Me, adjourned, thank you.